It's Monday, February 1st, 2021 at 7:00 PM, and we're in regular session tonight. Our first item of business is establishing a quorum, and all members of council are present. Our next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session held on January 19th, 2021. If I could have a motion for approval of these minutes?
So moved.
Sarah Grace moved, and do we have a second? Maybe that it's frozen. Is anybody seconding here?
Chris Paul.
Okay, thank you. You're gonna have to help me. My internet connection is unstable tonight, so the screen is freezing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. The motion carries, and the minutes have been approved. The next item of business is communications, and I believe Ryan and Scott have a screen share to share with us. This is newly activated in Apple and Google, the Apple Apps and Google Play Store, and it's called the Athens, Ohio City Source. And it's just a great tool. You can report city issues. You can get city news. You can search for city jobs. And it's as easy as just loading, downloading that app on your iPhone. You can also use the regular application if you want to report a concern at the city's website using your computer. But being able to have that app on your iPhone, if you use one, just makes it really easy when you're out and about and you see an issue. So thanks, Scott and Ryan, for moving this along and getting us to the next step on the Athens City Source. Thank you. The other item of business is a notice that was issued to city council from the Woda Cooper Companies. And this is notifying us that they have a 40-unit as well as a 60-unit building that will be going in within three miles of the Athens city limits. And so they have notified us that they're of the development and its proposed financing through the permanent first mortgage housing credits proceeds. They're also working with HAPCAP, one of our community partners. And so we'll likely be hearing more about that. So it's good to have that notice. Are there any other communications from other council members? Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd just make the public aware that this Wednesday night, February 3rd, at 6:00 PM, the Environment and Sustainability Commission will be meeting via Zoom. Thank you.
Good. And any other communications from council members? If not, we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason?
No report.
Mayor Patterson?
Unmute myself. Thank you, President Nisley. I just have a couple things to share tonight. First off, I received a letter from a citizen whom a lot of us know, Pete Wisher, who is asking to consider a proposal for humanitarian warm-up stations. I will be reaching out to Pete and explore this more and certainly be sharing this letter with city council. The other thing I want to remind people, and I think this is really important, and that is that even though even though there are the various phases for getting the vaccine, that were, you know, individuals 80-plus, and then again, under 1B, it was last week, individuals who are 75-plus. This week, Athens County is one of nine counties or areas in the state where they are sending significant vaccine for teachers and school administrators as they're piloting this to make sure they can get the vaccine out to all teachers, again, custodial staff, administrators in the K-12 system, so that hopefully they can get back to a different form of instruction for K-12 students. That said, I think it's important that everyone know that there is a level of patience that they need to kind of keep in mind with the vaccine as it does roll out. Even though they have given these set age ranges, a lot of it's predicated on our county getting the doses that we would need to be able to vaccinate all individuals 75-plus. And then that'll change yet again to age 70-plus and then 65-plus. I just share that because I think that we all kind of get in this mindset that, hey, this is my week to be able to get my dose. And again, that's really all based upon there being enough doses for those age groups. So I'm just, it's kind of my plea to those who are watching tonight, that be patient, please. There will be more vaccine that will continue to come into Athens County. The Athens County Health Department and the pharmacies that are receiving their allotments are doing everything in their power to where there is no vaccine that's being wasted once they do open up a vial and start getting people through that vaccination process. So I just, I really want to stress that, that it will be happening. It is happening. Just be patient that the vaccine is coming in. It's all based upon getting the doses that we need to do, get in volume. But they're coming. So just know that moving forward. And that's all I have, President Nisley. Thank you.
Thanks. And Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, President Nisley. I just wanted to follow up on the mayor's comments. I spoke with some residents of the 3rd Ward this past weekend who had received the vaccine at two different locations. One couple had received it at the Heritage College, the Heritage Hall on Union Street, and the other had received it at the Community Center, and both reported an incredibly smooth process. They were very impressed with no lines, the politeness, the way everything was explained, the sort of time in motion where you moved and where you waited, and they couldn't be more pleased. So I just wanted to commend those who are doing such a great job here in our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Smedley?
Thank you, President Nisley. And in that same vein, I wanted to add that in addition to being limited by the number of vaccines we get, we are operating under a phased approach that is dictated by the governor. And so it's not, these are not decisions being made at the local level. These are rules and phased, defined phases that are established at the state level, simply implemented at the local level. And so, and I can, I would echo what Member Crowell said. The Health Department is operating under a tremendous amount of stress and demand, but they are operating at the utmost professionalism and the utmost care at the local level, and they should be applauded anytime you see them out in the community.
Yes. Councilmember Claude Filter?
And I would like to somewhat echo the comments of my colleagues and say that I've also heard from friends who got their vaccines at Hopewell. And they, I heard that from two different people independently of one another. And they both also said that at Hopewell, things were running extremely well. They were very impressed. Neither of them had been there before. And one of them commented that she's not very comfortable with computers, and she liked the fact that she could schedule her appointment at Hopewell just by calling on the phone. Apparently, maybe as hundreds of people already know in town, the procedure at Hopewell is you call, you leave a message, and then they call you back to schedule the appointment. And she said she got her call back within two hours of the time she initially called. So I think that pharmacists are providing excellent service all over town. I haven't yet heard from anyone who's gotten the vaccine at Kroger's, but they're, as far as I know, they're still giving vaccines Monday through Saturday. There are a lot of people getting vaccines there. And Mayor Patterson, I wonder, is it, would you be comfortable sharing with us in the public approximately how many doses of the vaccine Athens is receiving weekly now?
What I can tell you for this week is that they're receiving well over 900 doses because they, again, their plan Friday is to start getting shots in arms at 6:30 AM and not wrapping up until 7:00 PM Friday to where they get the entire school districts through to get them vaccinated. So that's an awful lot of doses, when you think about it. There will also be in vaccinating this Friday individuals that need to receive their second dose, that were under 1A. So that will be happening as well. So again, like I mentioned in my conversation with Administrator Jack Pepper at the Athens City County Health Department, that they plan on administering close to 1,100 doses of the vaccine this Friday in one day. That's a lot in one day. And I would agree. I've actually gone down and observed what's going on at Heritage Hall, Ohio University's Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine's new building. And it is extremely streamlined. It is very comfortable. People are socially distanced when they have to wait their 15 minutes to get their shot. So I'm really proud of what is happening here within our own county.
And likewise, Kroger, we can speak from firsthand experience in our family. Kroger is also very streamlined from registration on to administering the vaccine. So yeah, thanks to everyone in the community. All right. We'll move on to ordinances for second reading. Not aware of any, oh, we do have some suspensions later on for first readings, but I'm not aware of any suspensions for the second. So I will pause briefly after reading the title to see if there are any comments or questions. Ordinance 821 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of softening salt for the water treatment plant and is introduced by Councilmember Grace. Any comments or questions? Okay. 921 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to close streets in the Uptown area for special events during the 2021 calendar year and to change requested dates or cancel events as necessary. Introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Councilmember Kotzis, yes?
Yes, President Nisley, thank you. And I just wanted to make mention, I did speak with Assistant Safety Service Director Andrew Chickie today. And as of right now, the list, of course, I would be making an amendment if we were changing any of the events, adding or subtracting any. But currently, right now, that list still stands as the list of events that will be considered this year.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. Any other comments or questions? Okay. 1021 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 13.04.10, "Unnecessary Noise in a Designated Area", introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Ordinance 1121 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, "Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting to Allow Vending in a Designated Area", introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. And if no questions or comments, we'll move on now to the ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 1221 is an ordinance authorizing "Unneeded or Obsolete Municipal Personal Property to Be Sold by Internet Auction", introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. The title of this ordinance really says all there is, but I'll go ahead and read Section 1. Athens City Council, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 721.15D, hereby authorizes the Service Safety Director or his designee to enter into an agreement with the government auction service to conduct internet auctions for the selling of unneeded or obsolete municipal personal property and shall require the bidder to pay all fees, taxes, and charges. Auction items will be advertised for no less than 10 days, including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay, thank you. If no other comments or questions, I'll move on to ordinance 1321. This is an ordinance amending the 2021 staffing levels authorized by Ordinance 14120, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. This is to correct some data we had switched in the original ordinance 14120. And this is for the Arts Parks and Recreation Program Specialist for the Arts Program. Section 1 reads, "The 2021 staffing levels authorized by Ordinance 14120 are hereby amended to read as follows." So Fund 270.940 Recreation should be .75 for that FTE. And Fund 271.940 Community Center should be 0.25 for that FTE. Those two were reversed in the original ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. If no other questions, then we'll move on to ordinance 1421. And this is an ordinance amending the 2021 Appropriation Ordinance and authorizing inter-fund transfers and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 01421.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reisner.
And this is to allow the auditor to have time to post these totals for their January reporting, both the appropriations and the fund transfers.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 01421.
Okay. We have a second from Councilmember Kotzis.
And we have a number of appropriations here. These are all for administrative services for funds that are outside the general fund. I'm going to go ahead and read through these. $93,322 to Street Fund 220, transaction code 300. $38,563 Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 300. $50,226 to Community Center Fund 271, TC 300. $2,681 to Parking Garage Fund 730, TC 300. $141,853 to Water Fund Administration, $133,071 to Sewer Fund Administration, $32,089 to Garbage Fund Administration, 760.636, transaction code 300. $12,439 to Internal Service Fund Mechanics, And finally, $12,439 to Internal Service Fund IT, All of those are for administrative services. And then we have a number of transfers. $4,618.23 to CDBG Fund 248, transaction code 600 for transfer. And $141,700 to Garbage Fund 760, transaction code 300, to pay a prior year bill to Athens Hawking Recycling Centers and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Included also in Section 3 is authorizing the auditor to make the following inter-fund transfers: From CDBG Fund 248 to General Fund 101.101, From CDBG Fund 248 to Street Fund 220, the amount of $1,178.33. From CDBG Fund 248 to Water Fund 740.636, And from CDBG Fund 248 to Sewer Fund 750.636, Thank you.
Okay. So we have the motion and second for approval. Any other comments or any comments or questions? Councilmember Kotzis?
Nice job, Member Crowell.
That's a lot of numbers. Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 1521 is an ordinance authorizing the payment of prior year expenses and declaring an emergency and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 01521.
Second from Councilmember Smedley.
And this is for timely paying of our bills.
So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 01521.
Second.
Councilmember Claude Filter, seconds. Okay.
Thank you. And this is a prior year bill that we need to pay our, the JWF Specialty, which is the third-party claim administrator for our self-insurance. And they are owed $10,000 for a claim that they worked on, a claim against the city they worked on last year. So the pertinent section here is, "The auditor is hereby authorized to expend up to $10,000 from General Fund Other Administrative, 101.120, transaction code 300, to pay a prior year expense to JWF for services rendered on a 2019 claim against the city." And then the other prior year bill is with the AHRC. And $141,700 from Garbage Fund 760, transaction 300, to pay a prior year expense to Athens Hawking Recycling Centers. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 1621 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to pay the newly hired street labor supervisor at a rate in accordance with Ordinance 14220, the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefits Package, Section 22, promotion, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 01621.
We have a second from Councilmember.
We need to pay a gentleman for the job he's been doing since December. Sorry.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 01621.
And we have a motion, second, from Councilmember Kotzis. Okay.
And as discussed in committee, this is an hourly rate increase for our new street labor supervisor, who was transferred from another department within the city. And he has been in this role since December, which is why I wanted to get this approved today, that he is receiving pay retroactively back to December 21st. Section 1 reads, "In accordance with the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefits Package, Ordinance 14220, Section 22A1, Promotion, Lateral Transfer, and Demotion of New Hires and Current Employees, Athens City Council does hereby authorize the Service Safety Director to pay the newly hired street labor supervisor at a rate up to 10% higher than the rate from which the employee was promoted, retroactive to December 21st, 2020." Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any comments or questions? Okay. If none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1721 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way permit to the University Estates Homeowners Association to allow a guardhouse structure on University Estates Boulevard at the State Route 682 entrance and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I will not ask to suspend the rules on this one. This is pretty straightforward. It's a guardhouse, meaning guarding the utilities that are right there as opposed to a gazebo or something else. So all the paperwork has been signed off, and it's all been okayed by the administration. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And any comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on then to announcements.
I think Member Kotzis had a question.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. That's Member Claude Filter, yes.
That's okay. You didn't see my hand. Just a comment, maybe to avoid confusion about the purpose of that guardhouse, maybe it should just be called a locker or something. You know, maybe there's some other noun that we could use so that there aren't various different perceptions of the purpose of that object.
How about a utility housing unit?
There you go.
An acronym for it.
Okay.
Or something. I'll think about it for the next couple weeks, too. So when the second reading is, I can say it. Okay. Thank you.
You, eh, you.
All right. We'll now move on to announcements and other business. And our first item, it's not listed, but I would like to go ahead since we have been given our December financial reports. I'd like to have a motion for approval of those. They were distributed to all council members. So we got a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Reisner, second by Councilmember Crowell. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Thank you. Those have been approved. Or accepted, excuse me. And we now have some appointments. One appointment and one reappointment for the Commission on Disabilities, and I believe Councilmember Smedley will lead us through.
Thank you, President Nisley. Can I do them in one motion? Or should I separate them out into two?
You could do them in one.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Noah Tremblay and appoint Lisa Simpson to the Disabilities Commission.
Okay. And we got a second from Councilmember Fall.
And just a quick note, Noah Tremblay, as many of you know, has been a longtime member of the commission and also is, has his own business around consulting around this area, making facilities and businesses and communities more accessible. So he obviously brings a unique perspective to the commission.
brings a unique perspective to the commission. And Lisa Simpson brings over 40 years of experience working in the field of developmental disabilities, and will herself also bring a wealth of knowledge and expertise to the council, to the, to the committee.
Good. Okay. So we have the, thank you. And, oh dear. So we have the motion and second, and we probably need to go ahead and approve. Did we already take the vote? I'm sorry. I'm just, I blanked for a second. Okay, thank you. I didn't want to move on without doing the vote. Okay. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And that's unanimous. So thank you in advance for both of your service, both of these new, or new and returning member to the Service on the Commission on Disabilities. And as our last item, we have, and, oh, I do want to make one other announcement, that we will be having a committee meeting next week, and so advising council members and administration, if you have any agenda items, if you can, please have them to our Clerk of Council, Debbie Walker, by Wednesday. She needs to publish that by end of the day on Thursday, the agenda. So that's great. All right. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that are not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone amongst the attendees who are here tonight that would want three minutes to speak on a topic that was not on the agenda? Not seeing anybody's hands raised or anything in the chat. Okay. All right. Well, if that case, then we could have a motion to adjourn our meeting for tonight.
So moved.
Moved by Chris Paul, Councilmember Fall, seconded by Councilmember Crowell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It doesn't look like. Okay. And we are adjourned at 7:30 PM, and we'll see you next month.